Call the speeding quarter. Welcome Mayor Cagnetti, Eileen Cipriani, Chief Judge, Chief Carroll, and Riley Associates. They're here tonight to talk about all the streetscape projects. So Mayor, we'll start with you and then you could go in any direction you want to go. I would ask Council though, if we would please refrain from questions. We'll go through your hole if each one of you wants to do your presentation and then at the end we could do the questions because I want to hear everybody's. All right? Thank you.
Thank you for having us. I'm here with Police Chief Tom Carroll, B A Eileen Cipriani, Fire Chief John Judge, and our engineer Tom Riley. We are here to walk through the downtown streetscapes project. We are pleased to announce that PennDOT has approved this. It has been the work of a couple of years now, working of course with our project management team led by Eileen and then Tom Riley at the helm with Riley Engineering. This comes off of the Jeff Speck study that we worked on. That was a project that was catalyzed by former Mayor Wayne Evans and we have worked with a variety of organizations throughout the downtown, including Scranton tomorrow, some of the developers with the Association for the Blind. We've sat down with members of the Center for Independent Living. We've been working with folks to really figure out how to explain this better. I think the data is quite clear and the need for this is quite clear from a variety of angles, but some of it is counterintuitive. I understand that changing, you know, the street lights, traffic lights, to stop signs is counterintuitive at first, but as we've been talking about for years now, from our time with Jeff Speck to now, is actually going to help make the city safer. The two-way, taking one ways to two ways is actually really, really important as well. We'll finally be able to drive around the county courthouse. I think it will be safer and quicker for our first responders to get from point A to point B, which we'll go into. And we really, at the end of the day, want to make sure that we are the safest city possible for pedestrians, for people who are living here, working here, having their businesses here, and then for drivers as well, right? Drivers want to make sure that the infrastructure is there for them to be able to safely get through the city. The city was designed, the current traffic plan was designed with speed in mind. Speed is not what you need in a busy downtown, especially one that is growing at the wonderful pace that our downtown is growing. So with that, I'll kick it to Police Chief Tom Carroll. Thank you.
Good evening, Council. I would like to say that I've reviewed the plan, the data and the reports and the studies. Additionally, I've gone through and I've analyzed basically the volume of calls in the past, over the past five years. In this period, in 2025, I did it from both the enforcement of law enforcement, our traffic enforcement piece, as well as the crash data. This year in 2025, which you won't see in the reports, but we had a significant spike in our enforcement efforts, over 200%. But it also correlates with the crash data. There's a lot of traffic downtown. There's a lot of the residents. It's growing. It's exciting, but it also brings a high number of crashes this year alone, over 200 as well. The factors, the volume, the infrastructure, everything, there's a lot that goes into the crash rates, which I'm not here to analyze or dive into. What I'm saying is that the plan that I reviewed, based on even this year's current data, is designed to increase safety in the city of Scranton. I believe that. It's going to enhance our response times for the police department. It'll be easier to control the traffic in our downtown. With the infrastructure currently set, with our enforcement efforts, we still have a high volume of crashes and we're looking to mitigate that. So we're looking for the public awareness campaigns, the infrastructure improvements, and we will, as the police department, be a big part of this once it is complete for our targeted enforcement and our education campaign. Scranton Police Department supports this action. Thank you.
Good evening, Council. It was about five years ago, I think, when I came in as the chief. This was one of the topics that started kind of right off the bat with Jeff Speck coming in and doing the study. You know, I did listen to his proposal. I also read the proposal that came through. I actually took the time to read his books. I visited a couple of the cities because I wanted to see how it was going to impact operations for the fire department and safety in the fire department. One of the things that we've been doing in the fire department and this council here has supported it a number of times is anything we could do to reduce our response times. It's never to drive faster. That's not what we're looking to do. It's how do we get there quicker? Do we process our calls quicker through the comm center? One of the things that you guys supported was the station alerting systems. We're seeing significant improvements just in the way we're dispatching our units now with the station alerting systems. We're getting 30 seconds sometimes because we're eliminating the tones. So anything we could do to get them there quicker. And the aspect of downtown living, we have a high hazard in the downtown with the high-rise buildings that we have to operate in. And in the last several years, we've had a couple of high-rise fires in apartment units. Those are challenging for us, so anything we could do to limit our response time is a big deal. So what I did is we looked at how are we going to respond to different areas with two-way streets? For us, you know, if I need to go to the 300 block of Adams Avenue, we have to go up the street, down Mulberry, up Linden, and then down Adams. You know, this is going to give us the ability to get on scene quicker, especially at some of what we consider our high-hazard target occupancies, where we have, you know, their high-rise is number one and we have a high volume of occupants inside the building. So that's a hazard for us that we have to, you know, try and mitigate through being able to get there quicker. So looking at those response times, it's going to be an improvement from the fire department's point of view. Also, when we end up going downtown, shutting down the streets when we're in operations, that's also now going to give the police department the ability with the way the streets are configured to reroute traffic when we're operating for prolonged periods of times into downtown. Another element, there's a lot of the utilities, overhead utilities, that are now going to be tucked in underground and some of that work has already started here. That gives us the ability to put up probably our number one asset, which, equipment-wise, is our ladder trucks. So there's some buildings when we go downtown, if there's power lines on that side of the street, we're not able to unbed our ladder trucks because of the hazard with the electrical utilities. So being able to now tuck those utilities underground, being able to operate and being able to access streets in either direction is going to help us with the timeliness aspect of getting on scene. The second element I looked at is, one of the things, there's two calls. One is a nuisance type of call that's always bothered me around here and it's, we go on a lot of overhead lines that get taken down by trucks and we've done some work with that. I won't talk too much about that, but that's one of my pet peeves that I've, is a nuisance call. The other one that I've always kind of focused in on is the number of pedestrians that are struck by motor vehicles in the city of Scranton. So we pulled the numbers and I'll just give you some quick information. I won't belabor the point, but from October 1st, 2024 through September 23rd of 2025, there was 87 accidents involving motor vehicle versus pedestrian in that one-year timeframe. And 20 of those accidents were in the downtown area that is being proposed to be adjusted through the streetscape project. So I went back, I wanted to see, is this trending in some type of direction? So I went back, pulled the numbers from, so that's 23% of our calls of people getting struck by motor vehicles happens in our downtown area. From January of 2020 through June of 2024, there were 234 incidents of pedestrians struck by motor vehicles. 54 of those accidents were in the downtown area. That equates to 23% as well. So the numbers continue to stay the same and I think most of you up there know the layout of our downtown, some of these streets, how wide they are and some of the setbacks, you know, it's almost like plain frogger for our pedestrians that are going across the street. We've had fatalities that have occurred downtown, substantial accidents, and finding a way to mitigate those accidents where it's a safer and it's a walkable downtown is important, especially with all the infrastructure that's being built up downtown and the additional housing units. I mean, our downtown has become pretty alive in the last couple of years and if you don't think so, take a ride downtown around Friday or Saturday night or Thursday night. And I think everybody in here would probably agree that there's a definite different vibe to the downtown and part of that's going to be making sure that we protect the residents. So from two aspects of the fire department, number one, it's going to increase our response, it's going to decrease our response times and it's going to give us the ability to take alternate routes to get to the different targeted hazards downtown where we have a substantial amount of our population living. And second, it's going to be safer for downtown walking. So like I said, I've been studying this since I came in as the chief, five and a half years ago. And, you know, this has been a lot of iterations through the report. There's been a lot of good feedback through council, through the mayor's office, through Eileen and her team and city engineer to get this to where it needs to get. And I'm excited to see these changes for a number of different reasons, but number one, from where I sit as the chief, it'll definitely increase public safety. Thank you.
Chief, I'm sorry to interrupt, but just real quick on the numbers that you had mentioned, that you had looked into for the number of crashes, do you happen to have it broken down into how many occurred at intersections with lights versus four-way stops? Because part of the concern that we've heard from residents is that there may be more pedestrian crashes at four-way stop intersections if they were to be changed from?
I can tell you from, I could tell you from my experience, not so much as the chief, but when I was assigned to Rescue One, because Rescue One goes on all accidents where pedestrian, pedestrian versus motor vehicle or motor vehicle accidents, rarely were they stop signs where, in neighborhoods where people were hit. It is usually traffic lights where they have a green and they're just going to go. Most people, the only way they're blowing a stop sign is if they don't know the stop signs there. So the higher impact crashes, I haven't broken that data down. I'd be happy to do it, but I could just tell you from my experience in 23 and a half years with the city, the majority of those accidents are usually at traffic signals and not stop signs.
Okay. Thank you.
So would these be during peak hours or special events where we incur more of these pedestrian crashes?
I think from, and once again, I could break it down even further, but just from the historical perspective of, you know, every time our department goes out for the last five and a half years, I get a text on my phone. And I could tell you pedestrian accidents are typically in the 3 o'clock to 5 o'clock range downtown, when people are usually walking, when we see a higher volume of pedestrians, obviously, and we see a higher traffic load on the roadways. So I could break that down further for you, Councilman McAndrew, but I can tell you just from my experience, they're typically going to be in those higher peak hours in the afternoon is when I typically see those.
Thank you.
So I'd just like to speak for a minute regarding our funding and the timeline for the project. So this has been a culmination of working with Riley and Associates and PennDOT for close to almost two years at this point. You will hear from Tom in a moment about the enormous study that has been put forth. In fact, it's the largest study, traffic study in this district that has been put forth and approved by PennDOT. So we're really very proud of the effort that they've done. But in order to do this, this took a lot of coordinated effort to acquire the funding. This is a $15.5 million project downtown. It will be done in six different pots. Those pots correlate to the funding. So in this project, we have two RACPs, two LSAs, a multimodal, and ARPA dollars. What's significant about the ARPA dollars is that ARPA dollars in, for transportation, are classified different than your typical ARPA dollars and need to be spent by September 30th of 2026. So we're less than a year from the time those dollars will expire. The other problematic factor is the RACPs are matched with the ARPA dollars. So if we did not have the ARPA dollars, we couldn't have the RACP dollars. So it's very significant that we stay on our timeline and be able to move forward. And we really thank PennDOT because PennDOT has been a true partner in this, working with us, realizing the timeline, including Secretary Carroll, who came and talked to us about this. And for, you know, for PennDOT to move as quickly as they have, it's been very impressive. So they've been great partners. And I just want to touch on public input. So we had several public meetings, but we also, as you heard from the chiefs, we talked to the chiefs, we talked to IT, we talked to DPW, we talked to the county commissioners, county planning, economic development, IT, Colts, downtown parking operator, the downtown developers, the Association of the Blind, Center for Independent Living, Radisson Hotels, multiple banks, Scranton tomorrow, and we engaged with 62 businesses, whether calling them or visiting them, to talk to them and get their perspective. And I know we've delivered a number of letters of support to you. We have more coming. The support has been very enthusiastic from the downtown population. Tom?
Thank you. So when we launched? We launched into the study and design of this. We started out with the walkability and connectivity study and then we met and scoped out a traffic, what would be necessary from a full traffic study with PennDOT. About 80% of the roads involved are PennDOT right-of-ways. And we, that resulted in the counting of 35 intersections and that in the footprint shown And they're counted, you know, for the full day and the peak hours are identified in the morning and the afternoon. And then a interconnected traffic model is developed and the interaction of the traffic, both the existing situation and proposed are compared and then as an overall model. But there's also a detailed analysis of each intersection. So each intersection is taken by itself also and there are 100, in the study, which is thousands of pages, there are several hundred pages per intersection analyzing the levels of service, the site distances, the crash histories, and the alternatives for improvement of that intersection to determine what is the most appropriate improvements and most appropriate controls for that intersection. We've been very fortunate with cooperation from the leadership and the traffic people. And we have met every other Thursday with PennDOT for the last five months, with a few additional meetings in between to go over the results of the analysis and talk about every single intersection. And we had, and for the most part, we agreed with some of the recommendations of the connectivity study, but in some cases, you know, we had to make modifications based on levels of service and the actual traffic that we did in such detail. And I'd like to go over, in the big picture, the changes. How do we make it safer? Basically, reduce vehicle speeds, otherwise called traffic calming. Changing the two-lane one-way streets to two-way streets. The two-way streets enable faster vehicle speeds and passing maneuvers, which is not compatible with busy crosswalks and on-street parking where people get in and out of their cars. Second is, we have some streets that have more lanes than is necessary based on the amount of traffic on them, like the two-through lanes in each direction on parts of Lackawanna and parts of Wyoming. And we have, and then control of intersections. Signals are needed where the traffic volumes and the situation at the intersection warrant the signal. And there's 10 different warrants to be analyzed to determine if a signal is necessary. And in some cases, you need a signal to control the flow of traffic. And you look at the traffic over a full day and you look at the traffic during peak four hours. And there are national standards and PennDOT standards that are compared and those are presented and the individual characteristics of the intersection in terms of pedestrians and pedestrian experience are looked at. And then how else do we improve safety? Put bump outs at the intersection, basically reduce the pedestrian travel length and keep a parked car away from, you want to have good visibility between someone crossing the street and a driver. And if there's cars parked too close to the intersection, that reduces that visibility where they can see each other. So, and the, and also the shorter travel path makes it safer. The other is something that better align the crosswalks and a lot of the crosswalks now are, go at diagonals and don't line up with the sidewalks that are coming down the street. And, you know, we've met with, from early in the process with the Association for the Blind and they gave us a lot of really excellent input on what helps with visually impaired and some of those things that they pushed for was the alignment of the crosswalks and then the crosswalks being highly visible. Because a fairly significant percentage of people who were highly visually impaired can detect light and color and can basically maneuver a crosswalk better. You know, people, you know, using a white cane can work, can maneuver better if they have a better visibility of the crosswalk. So there's a overlaid stamped asphalt, and we'll show you a picture of it shortly, that's wider than the existing minimum six feet and has a brightness to it. And we had agreed to review samples of the materials as we get some samples in with the Association for the Blind and have them look at, you know, at a sample of what it looks like and the visibility of it as we select the final colors for the crosswalks because we want them to all be uniform. And then another input that we got from them is helped is have, where we do have stop signs, have the LED flashers that are activated, so with hands-free motion sensors. And the next thing is, where we do keep the signals, make them function better and safer. Add lead pedestrian phases. So right now, if you don't have a lead pedestrian phase, you'll get a walk signal while the, when the through street simultaneously gets a green, so they can move at the same time and they're supposed to look at each other. But a lead pedestrian interval basically keeps all four directions on red for a short period of time to allow the pedestrian to cross.
So I know that we have one intersection downtown at least that has that over at Jefferson and Linden because of the history of students getting injured at that intersection, where they have the lead, like I think 15 seconds before the light turns green on either side.
Right. So that's actually a very long lead pedestrian interval. And it's, and an interesting point is, we also counted pedestrians at, you know, at every 15-minute intervals at all these intersections and that intersection has the highest pedestrian, peak hour pedestrian traffic by a factor of 400% versus any other intersection in the downtown for obvious reasons, basically, since, hence the having classes on both sides of Jefferson. And then besides the lead pedestrian intervals, the, for accessibility, they'll, the controllers are going to be hands-free, so you can wave your hand by it. And then it will also have a visual, have a verbal, they'll say, you know, walk signal, you know, say Mulberry crosswalk, walk now, so that if you have trouble visualizing which intersection has the walk signal, it will give you the verbal. And if you have trouble touching the actuator, it'll just activate hands-free. And that's...
Excuse me, for clarity's sake, this is where there's going to be traffic lights, correct?
Yes.
All right. So...
And it'll also be a hands-free activation of the flashing.
And that's fantastic. I'm glad you're increasing safety, but where are the same measures going to be made for where the stop signs are?
So for the stop signs...
Or the proposed stop signs?
For the proposed stop signs, they're going to be flashing, so when you're approached, there's going to be a post and a hands-free will activate and flash the stop signs. And then at the intersections, there's four intersections, and I think it's later in my slides, but there are four intersections where we're going to have, in addition to the stop signs on the four corners, we're going to have an overhead stop sign flashing. And that is also at Wyoming and Biden, Wyoming and Linden, and Linden, and Linden, Washington, Linden, Adams, where we have stop signs, they're also going to have the overhead stop sign. And on the mast arm, the mast arm will allow the city IT and police to continue their use of the overhead CCTV. Because with the mast arm, and the CCTV, they're able to get a view up and down the street, which is something that, some input that we got from IT and the police department and the Association for the Blind.
What's the level of reliability with technology like that? I could just imagine like if we ran into issues with it or if there was an intersection where it wasn't working temporarily, would we make it easy for people to report the issue with it so it can be fixed quickly?
So they have a wireless technology that allows it to come back to a central monitoring point, so that... So, so the, so the city, city IT or, or, or DPW will be able to have an app that will, that, that will get a signal if one of them is out. So it's, 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 it, you know, it, it includes, you know, technology that, that lets you monitor whether it's working or not, which you can't do with the current version of technology.
Okay, great. So it's not on the, the pedestrian or-
Right, like right now, you have to go on and check it, and if it doesn't work, then, you know, and, but, but with the electron, with the, with the technology, the, the city will be able to track which ones, which ones of the new ones work at, at the signalized and unsignalized intersections.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Riley, so we're going to have, at the lights-
That we're going to leave in place, there's going to be verbal, verbal cues for pedestrians that are crossing, correct? You said it's going to tell you what the intersection is?
Yes.
It's going to tell you whether to walk. And then for visually impaired at the always stops, there's going to be flashing lights on the stop signs themselves?
There are flashing lights on the stop signs, and it will flash at all four directions. You know, so if you're crossing, say Biden Street, it will also flash for the traffic on Washington.
Okay. And then some of those intersections are going to have an overhead hanging stop sign?
Right. Well, Biden and Washington is actually going to still be a signal. But say, Linden and Washington will still have an overhead even though it's going to be a stop sign.
So Linden and Washington, right by, I'm trying to imagine, it's right by Catch 21, Courthouse, Federal Building there, that's going to have an overhead hanging stop sign?
So, so the stop sign, the, the signals are remaining at, at Biden and Adams and Biden and Washington. The, let's see, the, yeah, so, and another, another interesting difference from, from, from the traffic study, from the, from the earlier connectivity study, is they had said to keep the first block of Biden Street off the expressway as one way. But we were able to determine that we got better levels of service if we, if the entire Biden Street was two-way. So now you'll be able to get on the expressway by going south on Biden Street. So, and then one thing that, if you get, getting into the weeds of the traffic study, one of, one of the, one of the bottlenecks is, is Jefferson. And if you, the, the, being able to have additional ways to get on the expressway other than, other than coming south on Jefferson, you know, being able to, or, being able to get on the expressway at PM peak hour by going on Biden Street improves the afternoon traffic flow. Let me see. Then, other items, move overhead wires underground with the shared duct banks. The, and I, I think the chief mentioned the better accessibility, you know, to not having the wires in the way for, for emergency response. And, and the, and we've had monthly meetings with Comcast, who's the biggest occupier, a number of meetings with the county, who's also has, wants to get under, in the underground duct bank and is, has been cooperative with us.
With those overheads, with the overhead stops, are there wires involved in this? Is it like a metal arm that, that puts it out in the road? Like, what, what does that overhead stop sign look like?
Well, you know, the, it's a, you know, the mast arm that, that supports the-
The lights?
The traffic signal?
Yeah.
Basically, same thing.
Are we going to be keeping those downtown, or are we removing them totally from downtown? On the intersections that traffic lights are going to be removed, are you removing the infrastructure or those mast arms? Are they all going to be removed?
They are, except for those four intersections I just mentioned.
And those four intersections are going to have overhead stop signs?
Yes. You know, overhead stop signs and the CCTV. So we're going to add period lighting in all these areas, and we're going to add trees in the tree lawn and, and replace, and we're, do things like replace the, rehabilitate the walls on Lackawanna Avenue near the station.
For, for each of the lights that are going to be removed, have they met the, the national threshold for removal?
So they, they were well below the, well within the threshold for removal, and-
And that's just because of our city's population?
I, I'm sure that, that traffic patterns have changed a lot over the last 60 years, which is, I think, a lot of the traffic patterns that hap, that are, that are in place now happened at the time the expressway was built. You know, the, you know, the Central Scranton Expressway and the, the expressways were built back in the, in 60 years ago. And I think that they created a lot of the traffic, and I think, you know, you had traffic going to the Globe Store and other things that are not happening today. So it's, I'm, I would expect that traffic patterns are different from 60 years ago. The, two, so these are the streets, I think, as you're aware, the two sets of one-way couplets Biden Street, Linden Street, Adams have in North, and North Washington. And the advantage is traffic calming, slower speeds, a better safety, quicker emergency response, more direct routes to scenes, better exposure for retail and restaurants with a view from each direction, more logical paths for visitors, like, who can, don't have to go five blocks to, to go to, you know, a particular event or a restaurant, or, and more options for street closures for events, like our, like a race or, or a fiesta, or, like, you'd be able to close a block or blocks and still have, you know, better access than you do now to certain, like I say, say, parking areas that would be helpful for those events. The, so removing unwanted signals and replacing with improved stop control. The signals without sufficient traffic leads to drivers running red lights more and pedestrians crossing when, when lights are green. Basically, if, if, if you're used to having intersections where you, you see a, a signal and there's not a lot else going on, the, the history is that, is that both, both drivers and pedestrians don't take those signals as seriously. And, as well as, then crashes at signalized intersections more often at higher speed than stop controls intersections resulting in more severe results. And then advantages, the vehicles and pedestrian will have less delay with stop control. And, you know, and there, there's a number of intersections, you know, where people will be able to get, or going more efficiently because they're sitting at, at both, either sitting, waiting to cross a street for a walk signal when there are no cars there, or waiting for a green light. And, which, as I said in the first point, often leads to, to behavior that's, that, that could be more risky. The, this is the, the handout with the, the intersections that were changed, and, and a little bit of overlay of where, of where the, what the projects are. So the, in, if I just take the, the, what I would call the, the corridor between, between the two expressways, which is the Jefferson and Mulberry, they will all remain signalized. And we'll be adding, we'll be adding sig, signals for, for the two-way conversion at Adams and Washington. And those, those two intersections, especially the one right out here at City Hall, have, have, have antiquated and damaged equipment and poles. So those intersections will be completely new sets of signals. And then the other major improvement in that, that corridor, based on the traffic analysis, is that the Jefferson between, between Linden and Mulberry is going to be widened to, to add an additional lane. So that you, right, right now, there's one more lane between Linden and the expressway than there is between Linden and Mulberry, resulting in, in a bottleneck there. And so PennDOT was, had really pushed us to look at that hard. And so that, it, it's a minor amount of widening, but they'll be widened a couple feet on each side, they'll allow additional lane. Then the other big change at that, at the intersection of Mulberry, is if you're making a right turn from Mulberry onto, onto Jefferson, there, the, the turn, the, the trucks basically can't make the turn. And most of the truck traffic takes the route, the Mulberry-Jefferson route, and is supposed to, it's Route, it's US Route 11. So we're going to widen that intersection, we're going to widen that curve out substantially so the trucks don't have to cross over into the opposite lane to make a right when they're going from, from Mulberry to Jefferson.
So the, these are the 38 intersections, each stop sign, any traffic light are 38 intersections, correct?
They're, right, right. So-
And the ones with the stop signs are, they're the ones that are moving from a signal to a stop sign, or?
Right.
Not all of them?
So, 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 so this is the proposed condition. And if, I'll ta, I'll just go through each corridor pretty quickly. So, so, so on Lackawanna Avenue, there, there is one intersection that's being proposed to change to a stop sign, and that's, that's at Penn, to change to a three-way stop. And the reason it's still showing us a signal is that, that pro, the project to do bike lanes and streetscapes in that area, out to Mifflin and out to Seventh, is not currently on, on, not currently funded or in, in the detailed, in the design phase. So that's like a future consideration. But, but the, it's, the signal, it doesn't meet signal warrants, and the sig, and the intersection works better with a three-way stop. But we're not going to do it now because what we want to do is, when we do it, we want to improve the intersection with, with curb bump outs and better crosswalks. And we don't want to, we don't want to change it without doing those other streetscape-related things that we're going to be doing in the, in the heart of, in, on some of the other intersections. So on Jefferson, as we go north on Jefferson, there's proposed stop signs at, at Vine and And then as, if we take the Biden Street corridor, we're changing it to two-way, is, so Washington and Adams is remaining a, a, a signal with turning lanes. And then the, the Biden and Adams are remaining a signal, Biden and, and Washington is going to remain a signal. It, it, it doesn't make signal warrants, but that's the one that was closest to signal warrants, even, and we found that, that the levels of service, meaning the total delay, was, delay was increased with stop sign, whereas in the other situations, we either had a reduction in delay or no, or a negligible change in delay. At that intersection, there was a potential increase in delay. So in consultation with PennDOT, we kept, we're keeping the signal at Washington and Biden. And then, as we go out, Biden, Biden and Penn, Biden and Franklin, and, and, and then Biden and Mifflin is, is already a, a stop sign. So then on the Linden Street corridor-
Could we just go back a second? So, I mean, yeah, Biden and Mifflin is already a stop sign, Biden and Franklin may make sense. When we're looking at Biden and Penn and then Wyoming, tho, those are large intersections. So that's where we're going to have these bump outs? The stop sign is going to be on the bump out?
Yeah, I'll, I'll bring up some pictures of those, the bump outs, as I get, go through my slides.
When it comes to fire department vehicles, could they navigate those bump outs in those areas?
Yeah, so there, so we specifically have, have, every intersection downtown has a, a, a 3D model run of a fire truck making every, making a turn in every direction. So, so in the down, in the, in the downtown area, the standard is, is fire trucks. You know, where we have in, as, as I just said, in that, that Mulberry and Jefferson, we want to get a large truck through there. We don't want to get, we don't accommodate an 18-wheeler, 70, 67-foot trailer in our downtown area, but we do accommodate the fire trucks at every corner with the bump The, I think, as it's shown, we're, the, the Linden Street corridor is proposed to be stop signs. And then we have on Vine Street, we have stop signs except for at Washington, at, at Wyoming Avenue. And then at, at Olive and Washington, it's already a stop sign, but we're, we're basically, we're taking out what is like a free flow to go northbound on Washington, it'll come to a stop sign, just to improve the safety of, of that intersection as we change that block to two-way traffic. And then the, the project limits are shown here. I think project one is Lackawanna Avenue, and we'll, I'll go through some details of that. Lackawanna Avenue from Adams to, to Biden. And then we have another project, which is the, on Adam, on Lackawanna, from Adams to Wyoming, where the road is going to get paved curb to curb, and the meeting is going to be taken out of the 500 block. And then there's going to be on-street parking, we add about 24 spaces of on-street parking on the north side of Washington. And, and we don't need the right turn lane from, from Lackawanna to Cedar. So we're going to add parking in that area, there's like at least three spaces there. So there's an addition of parking. And then, and then when we, when we talk about like, like a road diet where we have extra lanes we don't need, that's also true on Wyoming. And we're, we're doing a full streetscape, including the bump outs and intersections between Biden and Linden. And with that road diet, we're able to add parking on, in that block.
Tom, when you're transitioning from streetlights to stop signs, will there be, will you still maintain the actual streetlight, like, bag it or keep it there, the actual equipment for a period of time to allow for the two or three months or something so that we know for sure that the new structure is working? And God forbid if it wasn't, we could still go back and-
Yeah, so here's the protocol.
Okay.
So, so be, a week in advance, you put up a, a message saying we're going to change it, and then, and you put up the stop sign, and you put a, a bag on the stop sign, just, this is just to give notice. And you keep it operational. And then at the same time, what we're going to do is, we're going to make sure the crosswalks are nicely painted, and then we're going to paint, if we don't, we're not, because the permanent, the permanent bump outs, you know, will take construction to build the curbs. We're going to put temporary bump outs with paint and the flexible delineators. And, and then, we, so then- so then after that week, we uncover the stop sign and we, um, put the, uh, the signals on, on flash. And we have a, a sign, we, we still have the message sign saying, you know, traffic pattern changes, they're on flash. And then we monitor that performance of that intersection for, for a month. And then that is acceptable. We turn off the signal and we put a bag on it and we take away the, the message board. And then we continue to monitor the performance for, um, uh, for at least 60 days or until, um, and after that 60 days, so, um, and, you know, we, uh, we've studied a number of different other cities where they, they've done signal removals and, and what, what I've found is, is that if, if there are 10, 20, 30 signal removals, it's not unusual to have one or two that they, um, decide not to do it after the experience. Um, but they, um, it'd be, it, so, um, you know, the, the city, um, from, I would try, we'll get the, monitor from a traffic standpoint, from, you know, all the, the city, um, you know, people, see, I'm sure we'll give you feedback, we'll give us feedback. And then, um, you know, then we'll give a, a thumbs up at the end of that period, which is a minimum of three months later whether or not it's, it, it's going to work.
Tom, correct me if, I'm sorry, just real quick, correct me if I'm wrong. The, um, the lights that are installed, PennDOT, they pay for the installation of all those lights, correct?
Of what?
When, when streetlights go up at an intersection, does the funding for those streetlights, does PennDOT cover the cost of those, that lighting system?
So,
The arms, the lights, all that stuff?
They, um,
Because I know we're responsible for having to repair them whenever.
Right, right. So, so, so PennDOT, PennDOT only pays for them if they, if there's a particular grant project. So like, um, so, so we, so the, the, the funding for this project is, is the permits. So PennDOT always issues a permit for a signal, um, whether it's on a state road or not on a state road, um, they have to issue the signal permit. Uh, but they sometimes pay for this, pay for the installation and the municipality sometimes or a different grant. So, uh, so it, it gets paid for through a variety of, of ways, whether it's PennDOT funding or PennDOT grant or ARPA funding or the, the various funding sources that we have. It's the, so, so the project budget includes the signal work.
So what happens once we decide after 60 days it's working? Then who gets that equipment? Who gets that lighting? Does the state or do we maintain that?
So, so, so the more, uh, the more modern equipment that's out there is going to, is, all of the equipment is, is the part, is the property of the city and will be stored at DPW. And we'll get to, like, for example, the signal heads that are, that are, there's a lot of modern signal heads out there. And when we put, like, when we add, when we add, um, signals, say, to, to Mulberry Street because, because Adams and, um, Washington are two-way or, um, we'll be able to, we won't have to buy signal heads. We'll, we'll be able to reuse the ones that we have.
Right, okay.
Um, so all of that, all, all of that hardware that's out there, whether it's a controller or a signal head or a pole, is property of the city and will be reused to the maximum extent it can be. And what's not reused in this project, you know, will be, you know, used for maintenance in the future by the, by, by the city traffic department.
Okay, so am I mistaken, mistaken in my understanding that, okay, after the 60 days, after a year, uh, because PennDOT already approved this and, and the permits, if we wanted to change everything back, are we allowed to do so? I'm hearing no. So, maybe you can clarify that for me.
So every signal, whether, if you could be, uh, you could, you, you could be on two city streets that are not, don't have any PennDOT right of way. Every signal, um, has to get a pet, a, a permit from PennDOT based on, say, law. So, so you can, um, so, and, and whether you put a signal up is, is, is supposed to be based on the criteria. It's not, um, you know, it's, it's based on the engineering criteria. You know, if, if, if some, if, if the intersection meets one of those criteria in the future, you can put a signal up. If it doesn't meet, if, if the signal, um, and then conversely, PennDOT has, in, in order to take a signal down, it, that's already up and permitted, you have to, we, you have to fill out about 200 pages of documentation, which we've done, that assesses all of these issues of whether or not it's warranted and whether or not the alternatives, what their alternatives are and whether they're safe. So each, each step of it coming down is, is done rigorously, just as putting it back up is supposed to be done rigorously. Um, you know, so, none of this is taken lightly and every intersection is looked at by itself, um, by, you know, the, the particular traffic and geometry and situation at every intersection based on all this detailed criteria and?
This is the threshold question I asked before. So all of these lights that will be removed, we've met the threshold to take it down. But if we wanted to replace them with the, with the another traffic light, it most likely wouldn't meet the threshold to bring it back up. So once they're gone, I think the question that Mr. McCandry was asking is if it meets that threshold to bring it down, once it's down, it may not be able to go back up because it would not meet that criteria in the future?
Well, I'll state, you should not have traffic signals that are not warranted because it's not safe compared to having, it's safer to have stop signs than to have unwarranted traffic signals. And, um, so just because something is the status quo doesn't mean that it's the safest situation. That's why, and, and that's also either to put up a traffic signal or take it down, there's a rigorous process.
Now that, the stoplight that's on, um,
So I do have other things to, to,
The stoplight that's on Biden and North Washington that you said is going to remain a stoplight, is that one that doesn't meet that threshold?
Well, it's right near the threshold, but one of the, the criteria is, is changes in, in delay or levels of service. So, so besides like the warrants, if you're right near the threshold and you have a levels of service, um, um, or delay issue, um, so, so like, for example, if, if we go through 30 days or 60 days or 90 days and we have excessive delay at an intersection, then, you know, it, it gets revisited and the, it's possible, it's, there's potential that the, that, that this, the, this, that it would, that this, it would, decision would be made to keep the signal. So, um, so all of that, the data that's gathered during that time period and the observations, you know, are going to be, you know, transparent to the, the city administration and council. And, you know, obviously you can see with your own eyes what the situation i- is as the test period involves. And, and when you do that, I mean, basically it's, it's transparent to the public. It's going to say, you know, it's, there's, one of the signs is, 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 you know, evaluation for removal. You know, it, it does, you know, it doesn't say, you know, removal, it says evaluation, test for removal. So, um, you know, if, if the observation is that it's, um, that, for, for one of the criteria that you look at, it's not working well, then, you know, the city, um, you know, with consultation with PennDOT, you know, um, so, so each of these intersections is, um, going to be looked at in their own merits for how they're performing.
At this point in time with the one-way traffic? Once it moves to two-way, how is that, um, what, what's the volume or, or the frequency? How is that determined? Does that change from two-way to one-way?
It, it gets redistributed and, and there's, are, based on, um, the criteria of, um, you know, there was, um, a, an analysis made on how it would get redistributed. And that was reviewed with PennDOT and the analysis made to determine, you know, what was the most logical change for each street. And then, um, that was evaluated and, um, levels of service predicted and delays predicted with those changes.
Does that threshold change once it switches from one-way to two-way?
Well, the thresholds are the same, but the, the traffic, there's a different traffic analysis with the two different ones.
So, Tom, I was interrupting you. I, I don't believe we're going to get through your entire, um, program. So, um, are you available for next week? We won't have to bring, um, everyone else in front of me to administration, but I, I don't believe we're going to have enough time. And, um, we have a regular meeting scheduled for this evening either, or also. So, um, if you're available for next week or your availability to, um, council people that would like to just meet you during the week or, um, if we could do that or come back.
Congressman Smear, we, we have, uh, off, put that offer out there. So anytime we have availability, um, we'd be happy to meet.
So, yeah, so, so like this is the intersection by the cathedral, showing the, the bump outs and the shorter crosswalks as, as an example. Um, and, you know, this is, um, the intersection, uh, by, um,
By the courthouse.
And the, um, the, the feral courthouse, you know, with the, so, so right now, there's already bump out on the, of the courthouse side. And so then you, you can also see what the, those outlines of the, of the travel paths, where the travel paths are lined up so that you have a logical pathway to continue on the sidewalk through the, through the crosswalk.
Okay. So, Tom, if, if you can, Eileen, I don't know if it's possible to get all his points, if you can get that to council and perhaps we can go through it and then prepare.
One thing, if I could just add that is important with the audits is going through, there will be, Tom mentioned the increase in, upon, uh, street parking. There will be 69 new parking spots, the majority of them which would be on Lackawanna and Wyoming. So it's a, a net very positive for parking downtown.
Okay.
I'm a little disappointed. We, we were told we could have some questions after we heard these folks out and now we don't have that ability.
I, I assume we were questioning why we were going along, but, um, we do have people waiting and, um,
If, um, if we get a high volume of, um, people from the public speaking tonight, would you be available for a question and answer if we did it before a council meeting from the public?
You, you want us to come back next week? Is that what you're asking?
I, I think, I think that's going to have to occur.
Riley would come back next week. I, I don't believe we have enough time to go through this entire program that he has.
Okay.
So, the, um, sure, we have a lot of more nice slides, but we could be here a while.
We'll, we'll do part two next week.
Okay, are we all right with that? So, um, we'll, we'll end the meeting on that. We will, um, start our regular meeting in a few minutes, but, um, sure, a lot of people waiting right now. So we'll continue this next week. So, thank you.
Thank you. Okay.